We'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, October 3rd, 2024 at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. First item will be invocation by Cadet Joe Durn of the Salvation Army, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Dear my Father, as we assemble here today, I just give thanks for this beautiful day, another day in Kodiak, Alaska. And Lord, I just ask that you be the guidance and the light in this room and over all the discussions over the agenda items presented here today. And Lord, I just thank you for all that you do, and I thank you for just being who you are, Lord. And Lord, I just ask that you keep us in good spirits and in good health. In your Son's name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the initial homeland of the Supiak Alutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutic region. We recognize the Alutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Ladoo.
Here.
Mr. Sherret.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arndt.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Scott, would you excuse Larry?
Moved to excuse Assemblymember Ladoo, who is absent due to medical leave.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next item we have is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Moved to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the Consent Agenda consists of the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of September 19th on there. Next item is Citizens' Comments. This is Agenda Items Not Scheduled for Public Hearing and General Comments. The local phone number is area code 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. And I ask you to please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. I know, I haven't got there. I'm reading the requirements there. So, at this time, go ahead and if you've signed in, announce your name and begin speaking.
Thank you, Mayor Arndt. I just wanted to, before I sign in, I just wanted to clarify, if we are here to speak on the public hearing, can we not make public comment?
Correct.
Because some...
On a public hea-
Okay. Because some people may want to speak and then leave and not be here for the hearing. So I just wanted to clarify for everybody in the room, we can still speak on the Contract Amendment, which is-
Nova.
-put forward, right?
So the Citizens' Comments, this portion on the Agenda is for general comments that are not on the under-public hearing items.
So if it's related to the public hearing, then-
If it's related to the public hearing, it is better that you comment under public hearing. However, I recognize what you just said, that they may be leaving. So I will ask the Assembly and the Mayor on what your wishes on that is.
Well, you'll get one shot at it, is what it'll amount to. So either you speak under Citizens' Comments or under the public hearing, but not both.
I apologize. Point of order, though, the item is also under 14(c) ordinances for introduction, and that one's not under public hearing.
Correct.
So they can speak to that.
Yes.
And also the resolution.
Yes. When I say not on the Agenda, under the public hearing portion of it. So, yes. And then the public hearing item actually is earlier on the Agenda, so it may be worth waiting just a few minutes.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak on items not scheduled for a public hearing and general comments, please come forward at this time or call in. Please do. Okay. Phone call?
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Assembly meeting, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Casey Doctorman.
Go ahead, Casey.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Assembly. My name is Casey Doctorman, and I am here tonight to speak about Kodiak Island Borough Regulation Code 10.10.010, which references junk or abandoned vehicles. There is a member of this Assembly that brings this issue to my attention by abandoning their junk on my family's private property. Item C of this regulation states, quote, "It is unlawful for a person without the consent of the property owner or person in possession or control of the property to store or abandon junk or a vehicle on said property unless such property is licensed as a junkyard and is open for disposal, or unless all necessary fees for removal and storage have been paid and all other requirements of disposable have been met," unquote. While this regulation identifies that such an action is unlawful, it appears that there is no enforcement mechanism that exists for this regulation. I am making a request to the Assembly that this code is revised to include an enforcement mechanism for such violations. In our current situation, the letter of the law is currently not in our favor. The spirit of the law, regardless, should demonstrate clear, responsible, and swift action to protect citizens such as myself. Again, I implore this Assembly to adopt an enforcement mechanism for such cases as this. In the meantime, I hope this person responsible for this injustice steps up and takes responsibility for their actions. Scott Arndt, thank you.
You're welcome, Casey.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please come forward.
Thank you. My name's Coral Chernoff, and I wish to speak on the 14(c) ordinances for introduction, for an ordinance to clarify language and requirements for solid waste services to the Kodiak Island Borough Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.25 Code. I guess I'll say, this came about through, we'll be talking later on about amendments. This was, I've been in arguing about my garbage for four years now. I was in for three years arguing with the contractor, and then the past year I've been in with the manager and staff. We have not resolved that, although they finally recognized that what I was doing was actually black and white in the contract. And then, but during all that time, it was said that, well, when this amendment changes, then this will happen, we'll have to, you know, I'll have to pay this certain way regardless. But then, when they went to change it, they've also always said, well, this is going to need a code change. I'm going to say that an amendment to a simple waste pickup contract that needs a code change is highly unusual, probably does not fall under the standard practices of contract. The contract is supposed to follow the code, so it's really highly unusual to make an amendment to the contract that then we have to change the code. I think this has been poor practice on behalf of the staff. I think that this comes from them supporting Alaska Waste and not, oh, sorry, the contractor, in not following the contract. And I think when they say this is to clarify language and requirements, I think that's also a really strong misstatement, because it's not to clarify the language, it is to change the language in the code to match the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward at this time, speak under Citizens' Comments? Do we have any other calls? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move on to awards and presentation. First one we have is a proclamation declaring Filipino-American National History Month. Whereas Filipino-American history and culture must be promoted because of the role of Filipino-American in the history of Kodiak and Alaska, and whereas positive role models will be able to instill and teach the Filipino-American youth the importance of education, authenticity, and values of their legacy. And whereas Kodiak is fortunate to count among its population a large concentration of citizens of Filipino descent, including those who have lived in Kodiak for generations and those who are new to the Kodiak area, who contribute to Kodiak's economy and society throughout their commitment to professions, commerce, family, and the arts. Now therefore, I, Scott Arndt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do here proclaim the month of October 2024 as Filipino-American National History Month. Please come forward and present. Use the microphone over there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Borough Assembly Members. My name is Ruby Passion. On behalf of the Filipino-American Association of Kodiak, we are grateful and humbly accept this proclamation presented here tonight, declaring the month of October as Filipino-American History Month. This recognition highlights the camaraderie between our community and the borough, emphasizing the rich contributions of Filipino-Americans to the cultural tapestry of Kodiak. We look forward to collaborating with the Borough Assembly and the entire community in celebrating this month through various events and activities that reflect our heritage and promote understanding and unity. Thank you for your support, thank you for supporting the Filipino community and acknowledging the importance of our history.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now we have another proclamation declaring the month of October National Community Planning Month. And have that. Whereas the change within a community is constant, and community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month allows us to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions, professional planners, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Kodiak Island Borough. Now therefore, I, Scott Arndt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, declare the month of October 2024 as Community Planning Month in the Kodiak Island Borough in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And Chris French, have you come forward?
All right. So, Chris French, speaking today as a member of the American Planning Association and the Alaska chapter of the American Planning Association, just wishing to thank the Mayor and the Assembly for this proclamation. And, you know, we've recently kicked off our work on the comprehensive plan, coming to a close hopefully soon on our hazard mitigation plan. So there are plans happening within the borough. Hopefully, we'll be, we'll have more participation from the citizens and the Assembly and the general public. So just looking forward to planning over the next several years and working on these plans with you all in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item we have is Committee Reports. Do we have any Committee Reports? Scott?
I attended a meeting of the hospital community group. The leadership of the hospital is changing the way they do some business by following what's called a hospitlers movement. They will have professional hospitlers who are MDs visiting with the patients and taking care of them, rather than to have a variety of individual physicians going. The hospitlers are going to be here in Kodiak for a long time. So, it's a change in how they do business. I just wanted to report that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Committee Reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. This is Contract Number FY 2019-25B, Amendment Number Two, With Waste Connections of Alaska Incorporated, Doing Business As Alaska Waste for Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services. Scott?
Moved to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Contract Number FY 2019-25B, Amendment Number Two, With Waste Connections of Alaska Incorporated, Doing Business As Alaska Waste for Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff Report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough established a Solid Waste Committee with Resolution Fiscal Year 2024-12 to evaluate, develop, and clarify inconsistencies and ambiguities in the current solid waste contract. This committee, consisting of Assembly members Turner, Smiley, and Ladoo, began meeting in January of 2024 and held nine meetings to discuss clarifications and updates needed to ensure that different customer types were being treated fairly when compared to similar customer types. It is important to note that all of these meetings were open to the public and allowed public comment. Two residents attended the meetings. One of them came because they thought it was actually the Solid Waste Advisory Board, but while they were there at an incorrect meeting, they were still able to ask their questions and get them answered. Since the time the First Amendment to this contract was passed, several customer complaints with a range of overfilled containers or inadequate containers to incorrect billing or inconsistent billing have come into the borough. Each of these complaints were considered and solutions to the issues were developed. Additionally, one of the other main issues that needed to be addressed was the methodology of how our current contractor was calculating the customer count. If that is not clarified, the contract to ensure, sorry, if it's not clarified, the current rates could go up as much as 13% for residential customers and 30% for commercial customers. At the committee's most recent meeting on September 10th, the compilation of the committee's work and suggested edits from the borough attorney were reviewed and accepted by the committee. And that's when it first came to the Assembly. It was emailed to the Assembly on August 30th, and then over the past two work sessions has been limited discussion, and that takes us to here tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of the manager? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moved to suspend the vote on the contract itself. Since we're in a public hearing period, I'd like to postpone the vote this evening until the Assembly has an opportunity to review and reflect on public testimony that is given during the public hearing process, and suspend this vote until a future meeting.
Usually what happens is we have the public hearing, and then we have, we close the public hearing, we have assembly discussion. That would be where one would move to postpone, amend, or anything like that. So I would ask that you do that under the discussion after the public hearing.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the manager at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and I will close the regular meeting, open the public hearing, and once again, the local number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. And I ask speakers to sign in and state their name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to please prevent feedback. So at this time, anybody wishing to call in or come forward, please do at this time in regard to, this is Amendment
Good evening, Assembly members and borough staff. So I started taking a lot of-
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Johnson. I am a property owner in town here, and I have been in delegation with Alaska Waste and borough staff on behalf of trying to settle my bill, be charged for what the contract says I should be charged for. Contractor has been trying to overcharge me. I've been to small claims court, they dropped that when they, that's a whole nother story for another time. In the work session, September 12th, 2024, I've gotten five minutes into it, and I've got four pages of notes. I could have listened for hours, but I'm getting ready to go crab fishing. So I've got a lot of that stuff going on. Borough staff states, and I paraphrase, and it keeps coming up, inconsistencies and ambiguity in current contract. It's not confusing the way that it's written. It says what it says. If there's confusion or ambiguities, that is on behalf of the contractor to resolve those issues, not borough staff as a public servant. The contract reads clearly, and code does not need to be changed to match the contract. Quite the contrary, contracts are written to follow code. And that is my very limited Googled definition of the difference between contract and code. Borough staff as public servant should not be working to help an entity or business, and if that contractor has issues to solve, they have a legal team to resolve those issues. Other contractors in town are working on their own amendments. They bring their amendments and their concerns forward to you guys, and you vote on them, not the way this has been happening. I have heard Assembly members, a couple minutes in later to it, saying that they need a substantial amount of time to go through this. The code rewrite and the contract rewrite is, I mean, it's vast. It's vast. If you don't have an understand, a complete understanding of what it says, I urge you to vote this down. Me and my experience with Alaska Waste, they're continuing to be uncooperative, or sorry, the contractors continue to be confusing and uncooperative, overcharging citizens of this community, offering limited information or omitting information or certain parts of the contract. And we brought it to the borough because the contractor, as per contract, was not resolving issues in a timely manner. I've been told they won't respond by writing when requested in writing, followed by phone calls demanding money, with unkind and unprofessional conduct, which is, again, a direct violation of the initial contract, which borough can and should enforce as per contract.
Go ahead and finish up, please.
So, kind of just a closing statement. There was another one about customer complaints and the confusion. There is no confusion. Contract should have been written and understood by all parties involved before it was signed, and amendments are small changes to the contract, not rewriting the code to match the contract.
Thank you. That's all, please. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak, please do so at this time.
There we go. I apologize. Sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Young. I'm a property owner and work for a local business here. I just want to address some of the things. I haven't had a lot of time to read into it, but from what I was able to, since receiving the contract, I found that the increase in fees will affect us and our customers. In addition, the billing structure is being changed to a weekly basis with enforced rates that don't, that change the way that we operate, changing it from being billed as we, from an on-call basis to a weekly enforced basis, which comes at times like when we don't have cash flow, and it doesn't, basically, we would have to like cover a certain period of like overhead during times that we aren't actually using the service. For example, this revision would increase our monthly costs from $20,000 to $47,000, almost more than double. Our biggest concern and recommendation is that the Assembly go back to the drawing board on this and get some community input. With garbage being a mandatory cost that you cannot avoid, it's not fair to dump this on every property owner without due process. I support adjustments for inflation, but doubling your rate is not reflective of inflation. The section defining that will charge, the section defining that they will charge per unit instead of per property is also a big deal for any property containing more than one unit. This is not a one-size-fits-all scenario, and we recommend that we let the Assembly consider the public's input on this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do it
My name is Lena Harrington. I own Bean and Bloom. I have had a few issues with the contract over the years, and I've been told a few different things. One of the things I was told with this amendment was that you guys, the contractor and the borough, are trying to make this better for everyone all around. Three years ago, I had a larger dumpster. I had it emptied when it was full, which was fair, because that's the trash that I used, and- used. And I paid, give or take, it was somewhere, it was less than $150 a month. The First Amendment doubles that and forces me to dump weekly, whether my dumpster is full or not. The Second Amendment, in blue, doubles the first. So you, my trash bill is increasing 300% over the span of three years. I am a small business owner. I am selling coffees. My trash bill should not be a quarter of my rent. And I don't have a choice, is what I've been told. Another thing that I've been told is that not every, I asked how we could get rates down. I was told that if everyone is paying, that our rates would decrease. And then I took the time to call multiple businesses and people I know and ask if they are even aware that they are supposed to pay a trash bill. Many of the, many of these businesses had no idea that there is a mandatory trash bill for their business. So, that doesn't look great because this contract's been out for how many years and it says that everyone has to have one. And you're just pushing those totals on us. We want smaller rates, obviously. We understand that we all use trash, but these prices are astronomical. But you're going to kill businesses with these kind of bills. Another issue I did have was a car was parked in front of my dumpster. I had to call for a tip. No one told me that my dumpster was full and it was not tipped. And that's in the contract that I'm supposed to be made aware. They sent someone to come tip the trash. And then my bill cycle came for the following month and I was charged double that week. I called and I fought that to the bitter end with the contractor. They swore up and down that I was, that they were in the right to charge me that. I've talked to the borough. And was told it does not say that. And in section 9.5B1, states that if the contractor does not collect any solid waste, due to a contract service exception, the contractor must return for a separate pickup. The authorized account holder may be charged an extra pickup fee outlined in the service fee scheduled in 11.1. That fee is telling me that you guys can charge me double that week. That's not fair. If I have a mandatory obligation that I have to pay for trash for that week, for, I have to have a tip every week and I have to pay for it, there's a responsibility that that service is performed. I have an issue with that. I hope that you guys find better solutions, better rates, and things move forward. But this contract I do not agree with in any way, shape, or form. And like I said, it's going to kill small businesses with these numbers. So I hope you guys take that into consideration.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Yes, she can. Go ahead, Coral.
I'm back. Thank you, Assembly. Good evening. I, I think it's unfortunate. This is a pretty big deal. And it's really, I, I do appreciate you letting people speak over their three minutes, you know, 10 seconds, 15 seconds over. But it's unfortunate that we only have three minutes to speak because there's a lot of things going on here. I'm going to touch on a few things, but besides this, I could go line by line with that amendment and within every five lines, there's an issue, I can find an issue. I found a lot of them. So we're not going to go over those grammatical, I'm going to go generally talk about some things. So, the current contract has a structure to it. The structure is that the Borough Assembly has hired the contractor, per the code, for health and safety reasons, to pick up the trash. Here's their job, literally. They have to pick up the trash, deliver it to the landfill, and take care of the billing. They are not to harass customers, they're not to overbill, they're not to double up on anything, they're not to check to see who's got who living in what building. That's not their job. So I'll just start there. In this process, and I've been there for most of the contract meetings since January, I think there was eight or 10 meetings. I was there for seven or eight. I've been in the contractor's office or talking to them, writing letters. I've been in front of the Assembly before. I've written the letters to the Assembly. I've been in the manager's office for a year. And I've been to small claims court. Now I'm going back to small claims court because the other one was dropped. So, I've really been in and out of this contract, have pretty good understanding of it. A big thing that's said about this contract is that it's ambiguous and unclear. I would have to say, anyone who says that probably has not opened the contract or tried to work their way through a problem with that contract. It's pretty clear. I've had an issue with this. I feel like there's been no meaningful participation from the citizens who bear the brunt of what happens with this contract. I've had three-minute meetings, or three-minute public comment, comment periods at the beginning. I've had to sit through meetings where I hear misinformation thrown around. I've been to all those meetings and besides the scratched-up, blue-lined, red-lined contract, there was not a contract in the room. I've been to my meetings in the office. There's not been a contract in the room except for the one I brought to the room. But thank you. I, there's a lot of issues with this. And can I just talk a little bit about equity?
I need you to sum up, Coral.
Yeah.
You, you've come to many work sessions and meetings and spoke. And you'll have, there's another, there's public comments at the end of the meeting here, too.
Okay.
So please sum up.
So I just want to just say equity has been raised a lot. And the current contract is outlined so that a building pays for the trash it produces. I don't know what's more equitable than that. As, I see head shaking. But anyway, that's all I want to say. And so billing units is going to change that structure and it will affect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward or call in, please do it at this time. So, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll reconvene the regular meeting and we have assembly discussion. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to postpone the vote on the contract barring the citizens' comments that we've heard this evening have heightened public concern. This is a mandatory charge that everyone is faced with. And I think, given the magnitude of this discussion, I would propose to postpone this vote to October 24th so we have an opportunity for the October 17th work session to allow additional public comment as well as discuss the public comment that we've heard this evening.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone till October 24th. Is there a second-
There's no meeting on October 24th. Regular meeting is on the 17th.
Okay. Regular meeting is on the 17th.
Work session is on the 10th. Regular meeting is on the 17th.
So is it your intent, Ryan, to postpone to the 17th, the next regular meeting? Which we would also have a work session in between there. Is that your intent?
Yes. 17th regular meeting. That allows us a work session to discuss the citizens' comments that we've heard tonight. And yes, I stand corrected. The work session on the 10th, regular meeting on the 17th.
Is there a second to the motion to postpone?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recall vote on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, two no's.
Okay. So, once again, postpone to a work session on October 10th and a regular meeting on October 17th. Next item we have is Borough Manager's Report. Amy Williams, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly. Earlier this week, Assemblymember Sherret, Community Development Director Chris French, and I attended the Kodeak Region Housing Steering Committee. Main topics were the self-help housing project through the Rural Alaska Community Action Program. You'll remember them as Rural CAP when they came and presented it to us earlier this year. And the fact that the Kodeak Economic Development Corporation received a $95,000 grant from the Denali Commission for a housing action plan. The people that are in there are limited, but they have some great ideas moving forward. During that meeting, I mentioned the possibility, because I know it's not approved yet, of what we're going to do with the mental health buildings. And I got immediate support from, or potential support or interest from the city, the school district, and Kanna, all that had funding sources that they thought that they might be able to tap into for that. So that's really exciting. And I see potential for four partners to go in and rehab those instead of just us. So that's really exciting. Working with the city, the school district is going to talk about it on Monday at their meeting. And I have a meeting either on Monday or Tuesday with Mike Pfeffer from Kanna, so we can talk about more of that. So I'm excited to see that progress. At the municipal office building here, we had a failure of the sewage lift pumps located in the crawl space of the building. That resulted in a very quick study of how the system works and which directions all of our different restrooms send materials to. Learned a lot about flows. They let me be in charge of the dye, which was actually a lot of fun, watching it go in and then running around, finding out which direction it went to. Our staff members, Cody Allen, Jenna Hassinger, Patricia Valerio, and Shane Trout, just, they're all in ENF. They all came together. They, it was miraculous. This team was so amazing, coming up with solutions, fixing things, calling all the people they know. We had really weird parts on a really old system and it was amazing to watch Cody reach out to everyone he's ever worked for. I was sending pictures to the Canneries folks like, have you seen this? And do you know what this is? The school district, searching eBay. We, like, our system is so old that it will not be replaced in kind. But we have developed temporary systems so we can re-stop, re-engage the restrooms that are closed. And we have figured out that those front two restrooms flow that way. So we're able to use those in the inner room. And then OSHA requires that we have four restrooms available. So that's why we have those lawn ornaments out front. They got used like the first day and then I've never seen anyone go out there. So, and I wouldn't either. Moving forward, we'll have two projects associated with this. One will be the temporary project that will include the billing for the honey wagon coming, the rental of the porta-potties, the temporary fix. And that will all be within this fiscal year. And then we'll have a longer project that can span over the fiscal years, where we were going to, we're going to have it redesigned, engineered, and done properly. The pumps that are in there are welded to their plates. The pipes are encased in cement. There is asbestos. We are attached to the annex building across the street where Red Cross is. That sewage comes over here. So I want to engage in a discussion of what's the future of that building as well, because I'd like to cut them off and not redesign to go under the building and all the way back over there. So this will bring up some future conversations on how to take care of that. As you know, the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens' Advisory Council was here in September. Attached in your packet are the meeting highlights from that meeting. Prince William Sound does a really great job with their advertising and their summaries. So if you're interested in that, it's there. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to ask them for you because much of their stuff is way over my head. But exciting that they were here. Planning and zoning passed their version of the capital improvement project list. In code, it says they have to give it to the Assembly, you know, 90 days before the end of the year. So we usually don't discuss it that early because we wait for the new Assembly to be, to be seated as necessary. But is it attached to the packet tonight in the event you want to see the work that they put into it? There's information on the AML Annual Conference. And I wanted to let you know that the joint use agreement will be discussed on the 10th. It's already signed by the school district. I spoke to the city this week. As soon as we sign their signing. So we look like maybe by the end of the week, we can get that, the end of next week, after you guys view it, we can get it signed. It's not something that the Assembly necessarily need to say, yes, Amy, you can sign this. But I would feel a lot better if you saw it and any questions came out before I did. In community development, they finished their three kickoff meetings for Plan 2045, which is our comprehensive plan. Now they are coming up with a new way for people. There is a fancy new online tool called Meeting in a Box. The URL is there. If you happen to have any ideas for visioning of what the community will look like, that link is there. Mayor, I'll help you do that if you have an idea.
Thank you, ma'am.
You are welcome. Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a work session on October 9th. They're focusing on the rewrite of Chapter 17.205. That chapter provides the review process for code amendments and rezoning requests. Additionally, they're going to be getting some training on managing and planning commission meetings. The Parks and Rec Committee is scheduled to meet at 11:00 AM on October 8th. They meet in the conference room downstairs. Multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan update had its comment period close on September 30th. What will happen next is we'll put that in some fancy software to make it look pretty and it will come to the Assembly for your review. It is 300 pages long. So I'll give you, I'll show you where the highlights are in there. So you don't have to wade through it all, but you'll have that. So you can look at it. Once the Assembly approves it, goes to FEMA. We want to try to get that done by the end of the year because we are not eligible for FEMA grants right now. Not saying that FEMA wouldn't help us in an emergency. We're just not eligible for grants from them unless we have a hazard mitigation plan in place. Community development has done a very good job with public engagement and talking to the city and our other communities in the region and under, so that they understand why it's important to adopt that. So that's going very well. As you know, we lost our associate planner. That position is open. Chris has done a very good job with getting that out. We've learned about all kinds of new fancy programs for almost graduates and graduates. There's a problem, a program called Handshake to recruit those folks that we had never heard of before, but now we are members of and using to recruit recent graduates. Assessing is wrapping up, hopefully, their in-person field inspections in Manoska Bell's Flats, Chuniak, and Pase Sagshack. As of the 1st, they've seen 902 different properties. I told you last week that we will be traveling for senior and disabled veteran exemptions. It says the flyer is attached. That is a lie. It is not. I did attach it last week. If you want to see that again, please let me know. The dates and communities are listed. And if you're interested in seeing if there's room on those trips, please contact SEMA. She'll get your information and we'll see if we can get some Assembly members out to those villages if anyone's interested. For exemptions, all exemption applications have been completed by the Kodeak Island Borough. We did have a reconsideration that happened on September 24th. The Borough has until October 24th to respond. We are also in, like, just past that 30-day process with a second one. The applicant has received their reconsider, reconsideration letter. And now they have 30 days to either appeal to the Assembly and you would be acting as Board of Equalization, or they could take it, choose to take it to the Superior Court if they don't agree with the assessor's decision. In engineering and facilities, there's more information there about the Borough Office lift station issues. If you're interested, there's no changes this week from what we printed last week on the boiler alert installations. We haven't had the prime contractor come over the past week. The Women's Bay Playground is open. It opened on Friday, September 27th. I was, I went back there to take pictures after I voted out at the fire hall and it was filled with kids. So instant, instant use and it was great to see. Patricia also has some interesting videos of Jenna and I going in circles. That's the only time you'll see it. So, talk to Patricia if you're interested. At the KFRC, we have fall carpet cleaning scheduled for October 12th with our janitorial contractor. Once that's completed, we'll do the hard surface floor cleaning and wax coating to help with the foot traffic. We told you last week their GSA representative was here. We're still waiting on updates on the items that we brought. At the landfill, we're doing electric fence maintenance. Alaska Department of Fish and Game has actually been on-site to help identify issues and solutions to improve the electric fence. We've had several bears move in this year, so many so that six will be walking up the lane when you drive out there. Great if you're a photographer, less great if you work out there. Alaska Department of Fish and Game has offered to provide training to specific bear hazing techniques for staff. So we can try to keep staff updated and a little bit safer out there. The bay lure facility closed on September 25th. We anticipate eight weeks for them to finish their major rebuild. During that time, we'll be doing a loose fill. There's a dumpster that has been provided right inside of the gate for residential customers that bring their waste to the landfill. So please still bring your self haul out there. It will be moved down to the face later. We did receive a joint request with Kanna for up to 500,000 We did receive a joint request with Kana for up to $500,000 from the Denali Commission for a regional solid waste management plan. So we're working with the Denali Commission on how we're going to use that money. So we're excited to get that moving. At the Leachate Treatment Plant, they did receive a response from ADUC regarding the request to reseed or add additional microbes to the system. They're just figuring out which direction they want to go. They're also trying three alternate polymer samples. The first sample appears to not improve the flocculent reaction. Jenna's here in case you have questions about that one. And the pretreatment upgrade, we didn't have any onsite presence from the contractor, so there's no movement on that either. With the school district, I read this one, and I was like, "No, that happened such a long time ago," but I think it was just because this week was so busy. Last Friday, we had a fuel oil leak. It was a pressurized system. It was contained to the boiler room at North Star, because it was pressurized. That oil atomized and sprayed against the wall. So if you were a North Star family, you probably heard that there was a gas leak Friday morning. It wasn't a gas leak. It was that pressurized fuel oil system. I got a call from Chief Ellis on my drive into work, letting me know that Bayside was on scene. I called ahead to staff. They, it was that morning that there was ice. They warmed up a car, and we went out there. And when we got there, the Kodiak Island Borough School District staff was there and in full swing of cleanup process. So we want to thank them for getting out there and taking care of it. Also want to thank Bayside Fire Department, because all of the teachers and children that were already at school were evacuated to Bayside. So Chief Ellis said that it was very noisy very early. So his wife called him and said, "Hey, when, when did all these children get here?" So, yeah, very interesting. The fire department continues to just have an amazing response, and they were on scene for that entire cleanup. And they had fans and expertise on getting the smell out of the school and walking around and making sure that everything was okay. So thanks to all those people that helped with that. For the Peterson Roof, the contractor has been awaiting for additional metal. The Mattsonship contained materials bypass Kodiak. It's supposed to be back on Monday, October 7th. We're hoping to have that done before the final inspection, which is anticipated on October 14th. So we are only 11 days away from final inspection day. I think everyone involved with the project is definitely counting down. Staff advertised the snow and ice removal contract for Bayview and Minoshka. That's out. We're anticipating a war at the November 7th regular assembly meeting. We also should be putting out tomorrow the KIB Facility Snow and Ice Control Contract RFP, which is also scheduled to go in front of the assembly on November 7th. In finance, if you're making a full payment, please have your money here to the Borough before the end of the day on October 15th to avoid additional penalties and interest. In information technology, our security audit responses were completed last Friday on the 27th, and they are in their fieldwork portion. They are 83% done with their two-factor authentication move for all users of that system. You guys should be getting emails about that, or printouts, as the case may be, about that system and how to use that. They are completing several tasks for the Clerks Department inside of Laserfish, and our GIS analyst has stepped up and taken over some of the work that our associate planner was doing, so we're thankful to Travis for that. Bayside Fire Department is getting new turnouts that are equipped with an integrated firefighter self-rescue system. They're also forever chemical-free, which is exciting, because those chemicals have been linked to cancer and reproductive issues in firefighters. So we're still getting those out of the fire service at Bayside. At the Bayside campus, we just want to remind the public that there are vehicles onsite that they're going to be used for the training of firefighters, for rescues, for, if the car is on fire. They are not for parts recovery, so please leave them alone. And also, we collect pallets out there, because that's how we start the fires we're going to train on, and they've been disappearing too. So please leave that stuff there, so they have the materials that they need for training. The Bayside Fire Department is celebrating a year of, they just call it their Wednesday Support Staff. Wednesday Support Staff has two members, Eric and Aaron. They have been coming out on Wednesdays to help with, take care of the different apparatus, do some janitorial work, and look at fire hydrants. They are also participating in the, getting qualified for the state finals for the Special Olympic Bowling Team, so we want to wish them good luck as they move forward. You'll have our list of reminders for Budget 26 at the bottom of that page, and then the only things attached tonight are the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council summary and the CIP list from planning and zoning. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Amy. Questions? We have Ryan, and then Bo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back under the Snow Removal and Ice Control, second bullet down. Review of the materials provided by Assemblymember Sherrett have concluded the Borough Attorney discovered that the codes and statutes provided are intended for insurance bonds, not for contracted service area work. Can I please get a written attorney's opinion provided to me that discloses that that is for bonds? Because that is indirect conflict with an administrative law judge's opinion, so this should be fun.
Okay. Amy?
Sure. I'll, I'll ask him. I, I think that came in verbally. Is that correct, or? Okay, so we'll have to see if he can put that in writing.
Ryan, that all, right now? Okay. Bo?
Thank you. Would it be worthwhile, matter manager, to maybe explore some way to provide a minimum level of security or containment for anything at Bayside for their training aides, like a small chain link perimeter? Would that be something worthwhile in, in looking into? I feel bad that they're trying to provide the service to the community and mostly on a voluntary basis, and I feel bad that their training aides could potentially be taken?
It might be. Bayside has a variety of problems. People leave derelict vehicles there, and then we pay to get rid of those derelict vehicles. And then when training opportunities come around and we find one that is good, right? Because it has to have the hazard materials taken out. Like, if we're going to set something on fire, we don't want it to be its own hazard. And so, yes, I can talk to Chief Ellis about if there's a different way he'd like to handle that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you again, Amy. Next item is messages from the Borough Mayor. Last week, I had the trip to Ketchikan for the Southeast Alaska Municipal Conference. It was very informative. It was a lot of information that was provided there. One of the, the things that Southeast Conference was working on and has received grant money for is heat pumps installation for Southeast and Kodiak will be through the Southeast Municipal Conference group. So they're going to be getting us more information as that is, is coming out, but that will be available in Kodiak, too. It's, as, if I remember correctly, it's over 400 homes is what they're hoping to. So it's a multimillion-dollar grant on there. So, oh, but met a lot of interesting people that, you know, we don't see at, at, either Alaska Municipal League Conference or the Southwest. So it was, it was, it was very, it was very informative for me with the different topics and the depth that they dug into it. And there's also potential for some plow-up with waste energy stuff that, there was, wasn't a presenter, just was attending and made some appointments with different communities. So we'll see. I asked some questions, and they'll be getting us information on, on that program, too. So we'll go from there. That's all I have at, at this time. Thank you, everybody, for, that got out to vote. And please remember, there's another election coming up here shortly, that early voting will be starting on soon. The next item we have is, is unfinished business. This is reconsideration of Ordinance Number FY 2025-5. An ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough rezoning Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 3, Kodiak Town Site Lot 8, Block 4, and Kodiak Town Site Lot 8, Block 8, Lot 3A. Common addresses are 211 Mill Bay Road, 215 Mill Bay Road, and 206 Kashevarov Avenue, from R3 Multifamily Residential to Business District. Nova, how do we want to proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, would you like a staff report?
That would, normally, we'd have a motion, but in light of the veto, figure I'd have you.
So we have a recommended motion for Mr., Mr. Smiley can start with the recommended motion.
Okay, you want to go through that? Okay. Scott?
Move to reconsider the vote taken on Ordinance Number FY 2025-05. An ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough rezoning Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 3, Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 4, and Kodiak Town Site Block 8, Lot 3A. Common addresses, 211 Mill Bay Road, 215 Mill Bay Road, and 206 Kashevarov Avenue, from R3 Multifamily Residential District to B Business District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Scott, is there anything you'd like to, to say? It has a staff report with your name on it.
The reason that I asked for reconsideration on this is that there were unforeseen consequences with the amendment made to the ordinance, and those unforeseen consequences are leading to confusion on the part of the donor. In addition to that, we're complicating what planning and zoning did, and that's a challenge for us, I think. And then we have to recognize that the Maritime Museum, the recipient of the gift from Mr. Markham, Maritime Museum has been in Kodiak for 30 years. It's been supported by nonprofit funding from the Assembly for years and years. It's a cultural.
Point of order, does this have to do with the reconsideration or the original application?
Reconsideration on his part. James?
I'll wait until he's finished speaking.
Okay. Scott, go ahead and finish.
The Maritime Museum is a cultural component of Kodiak Island and properly one, given the nature of our business districts. In addition, there's an issue here about property owner rights, and I'm unfamiliar with how to deal with that. Those are the reasons that I asked for reconsideration on this. I think it was unforeseen consequences of the amendment. Thank you.
All right. We have further discussion. James?
So although I conflicted out on the, on the original, this is a reconsideration, and so I believe that I should be able to vote on this, and so I'm asking for a decision.
Five-minute recess, please. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting. James, what we ask is that you declare, thank you, James?
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest and would like your ruling.
In light of previous rulings, I'd have to rule that you have a conflict at this time. Thank you. So, now we're back under Assembly discussion. Any further discussion? Bo, did you have anything? I was thinking you had your hand up.
So, I'm conflicted on how I want to vote on the reconsideration, reason being is I'm having a difficult time with the complete absence of transparency for the reason to reconsider. And I say that because when I asked for information from my fellow Assembly members as to why, during the work session, which is when we discuss items on the agenda for the regular meeting, which here we are, no information was given. We were, it was stated that several discussions took place resulting in the reason for reconsideration, including another Assembly member seconding that, and they, and the Assembly was still not provided with any information as to why. And so, because I advocate for transparency, I'm leaning towards we should reconsider it because we should inform the public. We should have all of the information available to us. It is disappointing that not only did the Assembly not receive any information, to include information resulting in a veto, so there's substantial information, or why would this even be reconsidered? It's really disappointing. I think the public deserves better. The Assembly deserves better. We should be transparent with our decision-making and information sharing. So, I guess for those reasons, it would be hypocritical of me to not vote yes on this, so I will support the reconsideration, and I'm curious to hear what people have to say.
Okay, further discussion? Any other? Jared?
I'll also be supporting reconsideration, but for, I think, different reasons. Thinking on it, I think, and seeing language in the mayor's veto too, I think, kind of underscored what I'd already been thinking about, is the potential precedence being set to the zoning process and the zoning approval process, including situations like this. Those conversations can certainly take place, but having it go through an amendment process, you know, an amendment process that could have, I think, much larger ramifications on zoning needs to be more thoughtfully debated between us. If we have issues with residential zone, residential properties being rezoned as commercial properties, then we should have some kind of policy understanding about what, what are, what are those kinds of parameters that we're thinking about. And I don't think that we, yeah, don't have enough information to, to push that through, through the amendment process, which is, I think, the reason why this reconsideration is being considered. So, I often don't really care much about the process, as long as the, the item itself is prudent. In this case, I don't think that the amendment was as prudent as we maybe originally thought, for some of the reasons that Assembly Member Whiteside brought up. So, so yes, I will be, be supporting reconsideration.
Okay. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is interesting to me because I proposed an amendment. We voted on it. We didn't have much of a discussion on it or sought clarification. So, I feel like probably now is about the only time I can give clarification or the intent of what that amendment was, even though I voted on it. Weirdest thing ever. No take-backs. So, when we originally looked at this, some of the concerns that were brought up in previous discussions and work sessions were what were the guarantees of the property conveyance actually going to the Maritime Museum once the rezoning was given? And we received no positive information that, that supported any guarantee that that was actually going to go, other than the landowner's intent. So, my motion was to grant unconditionally the rezoning once the conveyance had actually happened. I did that for a couple of different reasons. Number one, that to me is a protection for, again, this is my interpretation, that's a protection for the Maritime Museum. I would hate to think that the Maritime Museum would go through this effort only to have something happen and the property's not conveyed. Then they're conveyed, they're, or they're not conveyed, then they have this new rezoning.
Right. You're kind of getting away from the, the motion to reconsider and getting into the detail that would come if the motion is reconsidered.
So, I thought we were giving our position and why, if I misunderstood. So, I'll conclude. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to reconsider? There. Roll call vote on the motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to clarify that you only need a majority vote for this one, which is four votes, okay, for it to pass.
Okay.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, one no. So, the original, the motion carrying the amendment with it is now on the floor for discussion of the Assembly. Thank you.
Okay, so what we, what we have is, is the motion as amended before us, and now discussion is open. Ryan, I'd give you the floor.
No comment.
Any further discussion? Scott? Pardon me? Nova says that comes after you guys decide what you want to do here. No, it's already, it's already done. Already filed. So, Bo?
I'm awaiting new information. It, are we going to receive that from those who proposed reconsideration? I believe that's pretty critical at this point in time.
Okay, the motion is before you, as amended. Option is to amend it again, remove amendments, or anything you want. Amy, and then Bo?
Sorry, can I, so, the, the, it's the ordinance that's in front of you, right?
As amended.
The ordinance, well, we keep saying the motion, so I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not talking about a new motion. It's the ordinance that you passed, exactly how you passed it, is in front of you to vote on. So, if it's not amended, you're voting on the exact same thing that you just voted on at the end of the last meeting. So...
Unless they, it's open to amend it.
Yes, but I just wanted to clarify the language that we were discussing, the ordinance and not the motion.
It is also subject to postponement. If you would like to postpone it, that's okay too. It's not just amendment. It could be postponed as well. Thank you.
Okay, then I, I'd probably ask you, where does the veto fit in?
So, if it's postponed, then we're going to process the veto because that's already been submitted at the next meeting, unless you retract it.
Okay. I think Scott has hand up, and then Ryan.
Move to postpone to October tenth.
October seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone to October seventeenth, the next regular meeting. Is there a second to that? Seeing none, it fails for lack of a second. So, it is before you as it is. Any further discuss, Bo? Thank you. Oh, that's right. Ryan, and then Bo?
So, just want to get a point of clarification. So, what we are talking about right now is the original ordinance as it was amended with my amendment, and that's what we're discussing right now. So, I believe the ball is in my court. I would like to withdraw my amendment that states a stipulation that the rezoning is contingent upon the conveyance from the landowner.
Okay, so you're, you're... What's that, Jared?
It's mine. I can withdraw it.
Okay. Well, actually, since it passed, Nova?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify the motion, please. What he's, what I'm, I am understanding that the motion that Mr. Sherrett would like to propose is to amend the ordinance that's in place right now, that was adopted, line sixty-four, sixty-five. From effective date, this ordinance takes effect after conveyance from Mr. Markham into the Kodiak Maritime Museum, and he would like it to change to line sixty-three, effective date, this ordinance takes effect upon adoption. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is everyone clear on that motion?
Okay.
Then we need the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ryan is the maker of the motion. You want to speak first?
I'm not clear what that, could you explain that for me one more time, if, the amendment? Or proposed amendment?
So, the amendment, line sixty-four, would change from the wording, effective date, this ordinance take effect, takes effect after conveyance from Mr. Markham into the Kodiak Maritime Museum, and it will change the wording to effective date, this ordinance takes effect upon adoption.
It's eliminating the amendment. So...
It, it goes back to the motion, or to the, to the effective date back to the September five meeting, when it was first introduced. We're just going back to the original language in the ordinance.
So, I'm going, Ryan is the maker of the motion that's been seconded. I'm going to allow you to speak first, and then Steve, I'll let you.
So, the intent of that original was to protect the Maritime Museum. It wasn't nefarious actions. It wasn't to try to stop the transaction. It was to ensure some sort of security for the transaction. So, I have withdrawn that motion. I have proposed a new one that strikes that information, and I'll just close with, I sure wish people were this passionate about the school board financing. Thanks.
I agree with you. Steve?
Well, I think Assembly Member Sherrett said what I wanted, but really, all we're doing is returning it back to the original vote without an amendment, or we're voting to remove the amendment and turn it back to the original wording.
Correct. Any further discussion, questions? Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
No.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, one no. So, it refers back to the effective date of upon adoption, which is tonight.
Now, with that amendment, we need to vote on the motion as...
Vote on the ordinance.
On the, right, which is, but still a motion.
Amended.
Yeah.
Okay.
As amended, motion as amended on there. I call it a motion. So, my choice right now.
Okay. Are you ready for the vote?
Roll call vote, please.
Or any other discussion?
No, well, I had asked you before.
It's now a amended before you.
Okay. Bo?
Thank you. I don't feel the need to repeat everything I stated when the emotion, or the ordinance originally came up. I am curious now because we still haven't received any information as to when this conveyance is supposed to occur. If we're, if we're essentially removing three residential lots from the community, and we have no idea when that conveyance is going to happen, including, do we, we don't have any information. I'd be speculating if I'm, if I made any tax implications, but it doesn't sit well with me that there's still no information being given to us about any of this. This all just feels like the, this complete absence of transparency is just fundamentally flawed to me, despite having an admiration for maritime activities and the Maritime Museum, but still, this whole process was flawed, and to revert it back in the way, in the manner it was, to me, is government at its worst. I'll just leave it at that, and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, we have Ryan next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have to say that I'm actually rather disappointed as well. When we don't get the full picture, it's the same as not having a valid contract. And we all know how I feel about contracts. So, when information is piecemealed, incorrect, inconsistent, like Mr. Whiteside had indicated, lacks transparency, which is subjective, and I also feel that way. So, it is disappointing, and one of the things that bothers me the most about government in Kodiak is we, we have lots of little side discussions that become individual silos, and we hold information as power, and we don't share that information, and we, for some reason, think that that enables us, I don't know, in a power position. I'm going to share with you just real quickly. I had two exchanges in a post office. One was pleasant, and one was not pleasant about this issue. And again, I wish people were as emotionally driven about some of the larger issues than this. And not to detour from your guys' effort, but there are some much larger issues in the community that we face. I am saddened by the way that, that we've handled this, and I, boy, I'm still on the fence right now. I'm actually not ready to vote because this is, this is a bummer, and that's my position, that's my opinion, and I wish that we could have had a very transparent conversation in entirety about the contents of this proposal, this ordinance, this opportunity, and given the full picture. So, I hope you don't start with me on the call. Thanks.
It's a matter of where you are in the queue. On there. Any further discussion? Jared?
I, I think that, that the ordinance that's in front of us, that we have had the information that, that we need, and that it has gone through the process that we've set forth. The, I think the, the concerns over the lack of information about the effective date amendment that, that prompted the reconsideration was if, if we, for me, we have to back up to good policy, and good policy is that we really should not have language in an ordinance that, I think the mayor might have written about this in the veto, that can be construed as discriminatory, and then a, well, that's not quite the right word, but yeah, but, but could be interpreted as, as discriminatory when we make, it's not really an exception to, to the process, but, so, I, I agree with the spirit of the effective date amendment. But with that taken out, I feel like we do have the picture and that we should not, I, you know, use this as a particular test case or whatever for, for conveyance language for situations like this, which very, which very well may come up more in, in the future. So, so for me, I'm supporting this ordinance because I think it's a prudent ordinance, and it was a prudent process, and, and I think, and I think we should move on and congratulate the parties.
Anyone else wishing to make any?
that information, and we, for some reason, think that that enables us, I don't know, in a power position. Um, I, I'm gonna share with you just real quickly. I had two exchanges in a post office. One was pleasant, and one was not pleasant about this issue. And, um, again, I wish people were as emotionally driven about some of the larger issues than this, and not to detour from your guys' effort, but there are some much larger issues in the community that we face. Um, I am saddened, uh, by the way that, that we've handled this, and, um, I, boy, I'm still on the fence right now. I'm actually not ready to vote because this is, this is a bummer, uh, and that's my position, that's my opinion, uh, and I wish that we could have had a very transparent conversation in entirety about the contents of this proposal, this ordinance, this, um, opportunity, and given the full picture. So, um, hope you don't start with me on the call. Thanks.
It's a matter of where you are in the queue. On there. Any further discussion? Jared?
Um, I, I think, um, that, uh, that the ordinance that's in front of us, that we have had the information that, that we need, and that it has gone through the process that we've set forth. The, um, I think the, the, uh, concerns over the lack of information about the effective date, um, amendment that, that prompted the reconsideration, um, was if, if we, for me, we, we have to back up to good policy, and good policy is that we really should not have language in an ordinance that, um, I think the mayor might have written about this in the veto, that can be construed as discriminatory, and then a, um, uh, uh, well, that's not quite the right word, but yeah, um, but, but could be interpreted as, as discriminatory when we make, um, uh, it's not really an exception to, to the process, but, um, so, uh, I, I agree with the spirit of the, um, effective date amendment, um, but, uh, with that taken out, I feel like we do have the picture and that we should not, um, I, you know, use this as a particular, uh, test case or whatever for, um, for conveyance language for situations like this, which very, which very well may come up more in, in the future. Um, so, um, so for me, I'm supporting this ordinance because I think it's a prudent ordinance, and it was a prudent process, and, um, and I think, uh, and I think we should move on and congratulate the parties.
Anyone else wishing to make any comments or speak before the vote? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
No.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, one no.
Thank you. Next item we have is new business, um, contracts. First is contract number FY twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five, approval of the Kodiak Island Borough Advanced Assistance Hydrology and Hydraulic Study with River Focus Incorporated. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to approve contract number FY twenty-twenty-five hyphen twenty-five, Kodiak Island Borough Advanced Assistance in Hydrology and Hydraulic Study with River Focus Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough submitted an application for an advanced assistance hazard mitigation grant from FEMA through the Alaska Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management in July of twenty-twenty-three. In February of twenty-twenty-four, that same agency signed the grant award to the Kodiak Island Borough to conduct a hydrology and hydraulic study of the Russian River and Sergeant Creek. The grant award amount is in ninety, it was for ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. In May of this year, the Kodiak Island Borough published a request for proposals for the study. The RFP closed on August second, and on August thirty, River Focus Incorporated was selected by Borough Staff and Consult, in consultation with the Alaska Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to conduct the study. The proposal was selected for multiple reasons, including the proposable amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars with, was within the award grant amount, and the proposal met the hydrology and hydraulic study requirements of FEMA. The contractor has staff that actually has substantial experience working within the Kodiak Island Borough and looking at other river basins very close to the ones that we'll be studying for this contract. The contract term is in line with the grant award timeline, which requires completion of the study by November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The Assembly accepted the grant award and authorized manager to sign the grant award document on April fourth. The grant award again was for ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty, and we're sliding in at ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. The Borough Attorney has reviewed this contract.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, couple questions. Uh, with the grant award, is there an administrative fee that the Borough gets to capitalize out of that ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars?
Uh, our Community Development Director is here tonight. I'm not aware of an administrative fee on this one.
So, there, as part, so if there's a second part of this grant, I don't have the exact amount, but there is a second part of this grant where, uh, the Borough was also awarded for administrative management of this grant. Um, I know it was under ten thousand dollars. I'm trying to remember exactly how much. I think it was a little over six thousand dollars if I remember correctly, but yes, we do, we do have a, a separate grant to this grant to help with administrative costs.
Thank you very much. That's what I needed.
Further questions on this? Um, one of the things we didn't do, we were approving it, but we didn't state the amount. I always appreciate when the amount is stated.
Ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine.
It's not in the motion. We usually do it in the motion. Would you make amendment, Jared?
Uh, yes. Um, move to amend the motion to include, um, the contract amount.
Second.
Ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety-seven thousand, yeah, there it is. Ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ryan seconded. Um, further discussion. Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, zero no.
Okay. So, now we have the motion as amended. Scott?
Um, Madam Manager, there's a letter in our, uh, packet tonight from the Plazas, Bernadette Plazas.
Yes.
Does this study have anything to do with her concerns?
Um, well, she has multiple concerns in that letter, Mr. Smiley, and one of them is that she thinks that the Borough should be able to control the way that that river flows. She's specifically talking about the Russian side because her address is on the dark side of the flats. Um, the Borough cannot control how the river flows, and, um, so this will give us a study of that whole river basin, and they're gonna, uh, do, part of the study is for both Sergeant Creek and Russian, so we'll have more information, but as far as a mitigation plan, that, that money is not there, or any, this is just for the study. Once we get those study results back, then it'll be, um, up to us to look at the recommendations that they make, if any. The main thing that we're asking them to focus on is the flooding on the Sergeant Creek side, where that water flows from Coast Guard property across the road into Sergeant Creek to make it safer for the people who live on that side of the flats to transit in and out of the flats. However, because they're right there and those rivers run so close together, we've asked them to do sampling, or to go back, they do cross-section at different places, back across those rivers. So, it'll give us some insight to what her issues are, but the, the main focus is that Sergeant Creek flooding.
So, is there a plan to inform her of the results of the study?
I just got the letter this afternoon, so I haven't really consumed all of it, but I, um, I know in the letter she said that when the Borough sold that land, we should, we should be watching it and make sure that it's safe, and I, I have to look more into our obligations as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Okay. Next item we have is resolution, uh, resolution number FY twenty-twenty-five dash six, approval of the Assembly meeting calendar for the year twenty-twenty-five. Scott?
Move to adopt resolution number FY twenty-twenty-five hyphen zero six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, staff report, Nova?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, ordinance number FY twenty-eighteen, twelve mandates that the Assembly establish and adopt its meeting schedule for the upcoming year through a resolution. The resolution is before you, and we have, uh, submitted to you the draft, um, calendar at the last work session, and there were no changes, so it is back before you again as an attachment to this resolution. Thank you.
Discussion, James?
So, over the last nine months, um, since, since basically January, we'll start there, we've had a number of work sessions, we've had a number of regular meetings, and in almost every regular meeting, not every, but almost every regular meeting, there has been discussion that we need to have more work sessions on a specific topic or another. And so, I think that if we're going to talk about this calendar, we probably should talk about having two work sessions in between each regular meeting so that we can have further discussion and work sessions, instead of having to delay more of our ordinances and resolutions in voting to help out people that don't really read the packets before the work session or before the regular meeting. And so, I think that if we change the entire calendar to reflect two work sessions in between every regular meeting, we might get a little bit further down the road in our decision-making.
Thank you. James, Ryan?
So, although I appreciate, uh, the comment, I also appreciate the fact that this Assembly recognizes when there are sensitive issues to discuss. Um, those sensitive issues typically require additional discussion. Uh, I don't believe changing the frequency of work sessions is going to motivate, uh, someone from reading the packet or not. Uh, and I believe that, um, the current process of our Thursdays being alternating work sessions and regular meetings is adequate as long as we continue to observe, uh, a, I guess, palatable agenda, and, and we've gone on to discussions about when we put two or three large items on an agenda. I specifically don't have the time to fully digest those items. However, I wouldn't want to be, uh, postponing that into a work session if there are items that, uh, I have not fully, um, digested in my review of a packet. Uh, I own that and, uh, pick my battles accordingly. So, uh, I'm not for that idea, but I do recognize the intent of it, and I could appreciate that. Thanks.
Further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with five yes, one no.
Okay. Thank you. Next one is resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash seven, designating the individual who will serve as the designated administrative official during the absence or disability of the Kodiak Island Borough Manager. Scott?
Move to adopt resolution number FY twenty-twenty-five hyphen zero seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Assembly recently adopted ordinance number fiscal year twenty-twenty-five zero seventh on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, which amended sections of the code pertaining to the role, responsibilities, and pay incentives of the administrative official. It is appropriate to adopt a new resolution which would designate the individual who will serve as the administrative official during the absence or disability, I don't like that last one, of the Kodiak Island Borough Manager. Um, I have nominated Engineering Facilities Director David Dave Conrad to serve as a designated administrative official during my absence. A separate, uh, resolution, which we will do next, will look at an alternate to that person. Last week at the work session, the Assembly decided that they didn't like the word standing administrative official, so we have changed that. Thank you, Nova. The corrected version, you'll see designated listed on lines five, sixteen, twenty, and twenty-five, instead of the word standing. So, I hope that you will approve that so that we can have a designated administrative official in place.
Okay, Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, for this. Um, I was the initiator of the A O initiative that we've undertaken, and we now see this in front of us. Um, I would respectfully disagree with your primary appointment, uh, and I'll give you a few reasons. Um, this is absolutely nothing personal to anyone. However, because we have such a critical position in engineering and facilities, and it is such a prominent position, case in point, failure of a sewer system, that would detract from primary responsibilities, uh, as you have listed, you know, here in this ordinance, uh, I think that a facilities manager is a critical position that needs continuous staffing. I would propose, uh, one or two others as your primary, but I would support, uh, the facilities in a secondary capacity, not a primary capacity, due to the critical components of the Engineering Facilities Director's day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion?
Oh. Thank you. I suppose I've never thought of it that way. Um, I don't know, I don't know how to proceed. That would be appropriate. Um, do we have, uh, this, I don't know how awkward this is gonna be, but I'm gonna ask it. Do we have other, other directors in mind?
Uh, that's a great question, Mr. Whiteside. Thank you. So, in the next resolution, um, the temporary administrative official that I would ask you to approve would be the Assessor SEMA Garut. Um, those are the only two directors that we currently have. The Finance Director cannot have this job because she can't approve her own expenditures, and so, given the new nature of our Community Development Director and our IT Director, those are the two directors that would meet, and they're not mandatory qualification, qualifications, but they are recommended qualifications, and in this case, I think they're, they're very good because those two directors are, um, just passing their one-year mark and still getting familiar with the activities of the Borough. So, um, I would say that the top two choices would be engineering facilities and assessing.
Continue. Bo?
Thank you. Um, so, I, I do agree with, with Mr. Sharrett, and I appreciate that, that perspective, and, and so, I'll, I'll get out of the way so other folks can speak to this, but I do believe we should consider an amendment.
Further discussion before an amendment? Ryan, before an amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak? Ryan?
Uh, make a motion to amend, uh, FY twenty-twenty-five zero seven, resolution FY twenty-twenty-five zero seven, the designated, uh, individual who will serve as the designated administrative official during the absence or disability of the Kodiak Island Borough from Mr. David Dave Conrad to SEMA Garut.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. We heard Ryan's original statement. Any further discussion on the amendment? James?
So, I, I like the amendment, um, but I'm not gonna vote in favor of it because we've chosen, um, the manager to make her decisions on how to run the, the Borough, and she has chosen the person that she has chosen, and so I will stick with that on this particular one.
Scott?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Turner.
Ryan?
Thank you. Um, again, to further substantiate this, um, I'd like for the Assembly to consider the emergency services position that Mr. Conrad holds, and during the emergency services stand-up, in the, if, in the, um, event that he is as an acting official, that will also take away substantial bandwidth to the emergency services in the flats. It will also take away substantial bandwidth in the, uh, incident command system that he fulfills, uh, his critical roles. Uh, SEMA does not hold those positions, so from a business continuity, disaster preparedness, and emergency response position, I can in good faith ask, uh, or endorse, uh, the original, um, applicant or the original nominee for this position based on an emergency preparedness and, um, disaster preparedness posture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? James?
Great point. I appreciate that, but at that point, then the temporary administrative official would take over because he would be incapacitated to do his duties as the acting, or excuse me, the designated administrative official, if he was doing those duties in Bell's flats and not able to run the Borough while the manager is out. So, I still don't see a, an issue with her decision on this, and so I haven't been swayed yet.
Bo?
Thank you. This, a lot of good discussion. Thank you, everyone. Um, this is gonna be another hard one for me to ask. Madam Manager, given the discussion, would you care to weigh in?
Um, I, Dave is a natural choice. He's been the interim manager, he's been acting manager, he's been here for fourteen years. His, um, expertise in how the Borough runs and how the departments work together is, is better than anyone else's just because of his experience at the Borough. Not saying that Mr. Sharrett doesn't have good points on why he might be pulled in other directions, but he was the natural choice just because of his longevity at the Borough. borough and his familiarity with sitting in this chair. I mean, we've all -- well, maybe not all of you, but most of you have looked out here and saw him sitting here. So that was the natural choice with the assessor being the backup. They're both more than qualified to be sitting in either of those positions, but I chose Dave because of his experience at the borough.
Bo, you want to follow up?
Just a quick one. I just want to clarify as well. I trust the manager's judgment. I don't mean to imply that this was in any way a lapse in that. But great points made. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it.
James?
So I want to clarify. Though I don't necessarily with the choice.
Say that again.
Though I don't necessarily agree with the choice that the manager made because of my opinions of some of the things that have happened over the last six years, I am still going to stick by her recommendation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's her choice.
Jared?
If we were going to be discussing personnel, should we move this into an executive session? Because it sounds like we're getting into that territory.
I don't think we've gotten there. It's just a name in the position. I don't think we've.
I think we're getting close.
Yeah, I agree, but I don't think we've gotten there yet. Anything else, Jared?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bo?
I hate to do this. I really do. I'm going to move to postpone this discussion.
Okay.
To the next available. Oh, I'm sorry. Right, that's right. Do we need to?
No.
Handle the first motion?
No.
Right now, the motion before you is to amend the appointment to Sema. So if your intention is to move this to the next work session, the amendment, then that's what's going to be moved to the next meeting, not the primary motion.
Okay. So by doing this, this is just because I don't have the confidence that others have with this topic. I trust the manager. I value input from everyone else. I'm going to need to rely on others on this one because I don't have the confidence to vote, so I'm going to move to postpone.
To the October 17th regular meeting?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Mayor. And if others vote the other way, I totally understand. It's just myself, I'm not comfortable making the vote or taking a vote on it now because I'm fairly ignorant in this topic.
Is there a second to the motion to postpone?
We have a motion on the floor.
You can postpone. It's a postponable motion on there. Do we have a second on the motion to postpone so we can discuss it? Seeing none, motion fails for lack of a second. Now, James, you had your hand up.
Nope.
Well, you did.
It was on the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
No.
Mr. Ames?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? The motion to amend fails with five nos and one yes.
Okay. Then we have the main motion before us as originally requested. Any further discussion? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that was an attempt to essentially flop. However, since that failed, I will be in support of this resolution, and I appreciate the healthy discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next item we have is Resolution Number 2025-8 Designating the Individual Who Will Serve as a Temporary Administrative Official During the Absence or Disability of the Borough Manager and Designated Administrative Official. Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2025 hyphen zero eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm going to sound like a broken record here for just a second, the Assembly recently adopted Ordinance Number Fiscal Year 25-07 on September 19th, 2024. This is the backup plan. So as we just made, the Engineering Facilities Director, the designated administrative official, he's on vacation right now in Pennsylvania. And so, this names a second person, a backup person in that role in the event of an absence. It also gives us three staff members so that between the three of us, we can ensure that someone is here and on the island at all time. So it's meant to be an insurance policy. Again, when you saw this last week, it still had the word "standing" in there. All of the standing has been removed, and it was on lines six, 18, 23, 27, and 30. All got moved to designated to make it clear and make the language match between the resolutions.
Any questions? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the packet, it says FY 2025-08, and it illustrates, again, David Dave Conrad. It does not name anyone else that's in the packet unless -- nope, this is a valid packet. So I guess we would need some clarification. We just adopted 2025-07, which was Mr. Conrad, correct?
Yes. On the version that I'm looking at, it says online 21 that assessing Department Director Sema Garut is officially designated and confirmed to fill the role of manager in the absence or disability of both the manager and the designated administrative official. Does yours not say that?
It does, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. I was looking at the core of the resolution. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. You no longer have a question, Ryan? Okay. Bo and James had hands up. That was what -- okay.
So I read the discussion piece of that incorrectly as well. So I saw that Dave Conrad, and it says this separate resolution, and that was the part that I skipped over when I was speed reading. And so.
Sounds like you all did.
I was going to ask the same question, and so I apologize for my speed reading.
Bo, that takes care of you, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussions or comments on this? Seeing none, roll call vote on the main motion, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinances for introduction. And this is Ordinance Number FY 2025-3, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending Title VIII Health and Safety Chapters 8.25 Solid Waste Collection and Disposal to clarify language and requirements for solid waste services. Scott?
Move to advance Ordinance Number FY 2025 hyphen zero three to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance that would introduce the contract changes so that the Kodiak Island Borough Code and the solid waste contract amendment were in line with their definitions. And so, in front of in your packet, you'll see a lot of red lines and blue lines. Patricia took the time to go through and change a lot of the stuff that was broken that we didn't fix in the First Amendment as far as the table of contents, and taking out a lot of the stuff that was incorrect or listed in there twice. So not all of these changes are directly related to the contract. A lot of it is cleaning up of the code, but because we did not discuss the contract tonight, I was assuming that we would also not discuss this. But if you want to, I'm more than happy to talk about it.
James?
So the committee worked pretty diligent on this. The staff worked pretty diligent on this. There was a lot of small errors, and it looks like a ton of small errors that were cleaned up by staff to help everybody navigate through this. It looks like there is a lot of changes made by the committee, and there really isn't. The one thing that we did not touch on that drives me nuts is, if everybody looks at it, it's line 318 in my packet. It starts at 317. It says, "All customers, whether with a cart, dumpster, roll-off, must do the following." And that is, I'm assuming it's "I," discard only securely bagged or bundled solid waste into carts, dumpsters, or roll-offs provided by the contract hauler. And this has been in there for a while, and I do not think that it should be because it hasn't been enforced for quite some time up until we started discussing this contract. It started getting enforced by putting tags on roll carts throughout the community. To -- this happened, this discussion happened, or this, if you will, enforcement of it or telling customers that they need to be bagging it is because of one of the trucks broke down due to loose articles. When you are operating machinery, things do get jammed into small spaces, and sometimes things break. I do not think that it is the community's responsibility to buy bags every single time, and it does not specify what types of bags. You could take a Safeway bag and put your trash in it and then put it into the roll cart because it says "bagged." It does not say that it must be a hefty bag or a plastic bag that ties, but that is what they are doing, is tagging customers' carts for putting their trash into Safeway bags and then throwing them into their dumpsters. Yes, some things will come loose out of those Safeway bags. It does not specify "bagged," what type of "bagged." And I have a very hard time forcing our community members to pay extra to use what we would call trash bags bought by a customer at a store when they walk home with them or drive home with them with their groceries in them, and they can use those because that is a bag. And so, I have a hard time with this, and I would rather strike that. And it is in two different places in the contract that things have to be bagged without being specified what type of bag. I think that those should be struck because anybody that goes to a dumpster or a roll-off does not put stuff in a bag. You can open up any of these containers all the way through town, and they are not bagged, but they are going to tell the roll-off or the roll-cart customers that they have to bag? We can't enforce that.
Okay. We got Ryan, and then Bo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I view.
Ryan, Scott. Excuse me. Go ahead, Ryan. Sure?
Yeah.
Yes. Thanks. I view the discussion that we're having right now in close association with the contract that we postponed for discussion. I would make a motion, will make a motion, to postpone this for the same consecutive dates. And I'm sorry, I just can't see the calendar again.
10th and 17th.
10th and 17th again, so that these closely related items can be, again, further discussed, further researched, and proposals like Mr. Turner's can be brought into consideration. Those -- that example that he shared is one of many that exists within this revision as well. And so, I would like to make that motion to postpone this with equitable dates.
We've got three people that would like to speak. Scott, then Bo, then James. Yeah, but he's made it. I just was wondering whether he wanted to let -- whether other people want to speak before we automatically went to a postponement. So nobody's second at this point. Do you have a problem, Ryan, with letting James speak? James? I know.
So normally, what we would do, instead of making a proposal or an amendment, we would let everybody speak beforehand on the topic, and then we would make a motion to postpone or to have an amendment. And we did not do that on the last one. We didn't even ask if anybody wanted to have a discussion on it. We just took the first person that talked and made a proposal to delay until a further date, and I think that that hinders some of the discussion. And we've heard tonight that we are hindering discussion throughout the process. And I just think that we keep doing that perpetually by making amendments or motions before everybody gets to speak.
I understand, but if somebody can move, I just asked to try and get it.
We should not be having discussion on it because it hasn't been seconded.
I didn't ask for the second. So he allowed it. I was trying to get discussion from everyone as much as possible. Well, that's -- and yeah, I do think it is on there. We could ask the clerk and try and do it. Yeah, we can take it literally and cut everybody off. Yeah, the first person speaking cut everything off, and I apologize if that's part of what happened before. But now we have it. Is there any further discussion before somebody makes it? Steve, a motion. Steve, and then Bo?
I will be supporting this amendment because sadly, I have to admit, due to things going on in my family and work, I have not had time to digest this properly, and so I will be supporting it, and will be looking at this more closely.
Bo?
Thank you. I'm right behind Mr. Sherret when the motion is made again. I agree. I'm going to just pepper this in there because this is very frustrating for me as well. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Requiring customers to produce more plastic is insanity to me, especially when a lot of members of this community are very mindful of putting biodegradables in their cans, cardboard, papers, if they can't make it through recycling, or green waste that isn't invasive in nature. So thank you, Mr. Turner. I agree, more plastic is not the answer.
Ryan? Or Nova?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a point of clarification. This ordinance is for introduction. Even if you were to advance this to public hearing at the next meeting, you will have the opportunity to make those changes before the public hearing. So I'm not sure, because if you postpone this item, it's going to go under unfinished business, and then this is going to delay it further, another, I would say, two weeks before you get to do anything. So I'm not sure. I don't want to get into the middle of what you want to change. If they're substantial enough, maybe it warrants a postponement, but if they're not, then maybe you should consider just moving it forward and have the staff bring you back some corrected version, some kind of a corrected version of the ordinance. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
So with that being said, I will agree with the postponement and second at this point.
So I just need him to make the motion again is what I was going to have to do.
Why? It's already on the floor.
No. No, it's not.
Okay. Then I'll second when you do it again.
Okay. Ryan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I've afforded everyone the opportunity to speak before I make this motion. To delay to the closely related previous discussion we were having in the contract, I understand the ramifications that this pushes out the introduction to public hearing even further. This does need more time. So my motion to delay this to the 10th and 17th still stands. Thank you.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? James?
So the reason why I seconded this is because I will not be here for the 10th and the 17th for that vote, and I don't think that we're going to come up with anything other than having to retrain or newly elected person to vote on this on the 7th of November. And so, it will take some time for that person to come up. And so it will take some time for that person to come up with a decision because they won't have, they won't have been afforded the time that everybody else on the dais has.
Thank you. Any further discussion on motion to postpone? Roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Sherrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
No.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, two noes.
Thank you. Just a second. Okay, next item we have is citizens' comments. The local number again is nine oh seven, four eight six, three two three one. Toll-free number is eight five five, four nine two, nine two zero two. Ask you to sign in and state your name for the record unless you've already signed in. And turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the assembly as a body and not any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback.
Mr. Mayor, Borough Assembly, Michael Johnson here. Three minutes is not a lot of time for public comment, especially on something of this size of the contract amendment and code amendments in regards to the contract with Alaska Waste or the contractor providing services to remove waste. It requires much time to understand and it affects every single citizen of this community. I appreciate everybody's time and attention. And I hope assembly members and borough staff will do their due diligence to be fully transparent, to provide access to all and any information available to the citizens, and to vote with the community in mind. You guys are public servants. You should be working for the citizens. If you don't fully understand this amendment, as a representative of this community and its members, I urge you to vote this amendment down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Please do so at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Assembly. I just wanna add a-
Coral, would you state your name for the record again, please?
Yep. Thank you. Coral Chernoff. And I just want to just go over a little, few more things, my opposition to the amendment and code changes. I think number one thing that I have to end with here is that there's been a few committee recommendations that I feel like happened in committee that haven't been brought forward. One, most especially, is there was a pretty heavy discussion and there was discussion at, and I think a work session too, where it was talked about that only the owner can be the customer, the account holder, the person billed. And then in this code language and contract that was forwarded to you, it's like the third time that this language keeps remaining in this, these two documents. It was very strongly stated in committee and at a work session. So I'm a little disappointed in that and I hope that can come out when it, I don't know how that works, when it comes to you next. There was also talk, there's been talk about what is the cost to the community for this? It was mentioned in one of the committees that there, it was suggested that there'd be an analysis between the contract with the change to the billing unit and compare to what the contract does now and then if you change to billing units. I've not heard that forwarded to the assembly at any of the meetings. And I did go back and listen to work sessions and meetings that I was out of town for. I did not hear that happen and I do not see that, have not seen that come forward. I think that while several of you are familiar with contracts, and I think if there's a contract, and it's certainly been asked by several of you about the cost and how it would, the effects of that, will that change the contract? And so I feel like it would be necessary to have Alaska Waste to produce that and that be submitted for you guys to see. I think that was it. I have a few more things. I just was really, well, I guess I'll wait until next time. But those were two of the main things I had to talk about. Committee, committee recommendations have not been forwarded to you and they keep appearing in front of you, the opposite of what was discussed, and then doing that analysis since several people had questions on it.
Thank you, Coral. You'll have a opportunity on the tenth, the work session on the tenth also. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments, either call in or come forward at this time. Toby?
I'm Toby Sullivan, the Executive Director of the Kodiak Maritime Museum. I have sat through several of these meetings while you guys talked about the zoning change and I'm happy to see what happened tonight and hopefully we'll be moving forward with the museum in the future. And just thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward under citizens' comments? No calls? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to assembly member comments. And we'll start with you, James.
Really?
Yes, sir.
So I tried to jot down some notes from tonight. And I have some issues with some of the proceedings over the last however many months and tonight. Amendments are made, it's seconded, first person that discusses it or that gets called on makes an amendment, the rest of the assembly doesn't get to discuss that amendment. We automatically vote right after the second. There is no comments from the assembly on that amendment. We just automatically vote on that. And that's, that's a little disconcerting. One of the comments was, tonight, from, from public comments was, three minutes is not enough. There was a, a meeting about time for discussion. We discussed how much time we were going to give to public comment, how much we were going to give to assembly comments. And it was basically voted down because we didn't want to limit the comments of the assembly. We were okay with limiting the comments of, of public, but not the assembly. And I thought that that was brought up a number of times in, in the last six years. And each time was voted down by the assembly to increase the time for public comment and decrease the time for the unlimited time that an assembly member gets to comment. And so we're stuck with it until somebody brings it back up. On item ten A tonight, an amendment, I'm sorry, I'm going back over what my notes were. Tonight, an assembly made, the assembly made, had a discussion on a reconsideration of an ordinance. I was recused on that. And now that the vote has been taken and has passed, I am going to talk on it. We reconsidered to help a single individual in the community. This was not to help the, the receiver of the gift. It was helped, it was to help an individual, not the community as a whole, not a nonprofit. And I think that helping one person for being a philanthropist, if I can say that word correctly, to better their tax implications is the wrong idea and it should never have passed. But we did. And so we'll go forward from there. If a business, if there is a business that does not create enough trash, which somebody had commented during public comments, if they don't create enough trash for a dumpster, then they should go to a roll cart. And that is an option for every business out there that does not create enough trash, which means that their costs will go down because they are using a smaller device. They can, a business can go to two roll carts instead of a dumpster if they wish to. I'm sorry, I am being corrected. Three or four if they wish to. They don't have to, if you get four, it's pretty much the same as the smallest dumpster, but for the cost. But there is an option. If you're paying too much for a dumpster and you don't create enough trash, then you should move down to a smaller receptacle. So to answer that question or the comment that was made during public comment, downsize. Just ask for a smaller container. You've already gone down to the, to the smallest dumpster, go down to the roll carts. If one isn't enough, get two. If two isn't enough, get three. Right? So it seems pretty easy to fix that situation to where you're not paying, what it was it, the comment, three hundred times what they normally paid? So downsize. It's, it's, it's easy. Just takes a phone call. Alaska Waste should tell you that on the phone. If you're not creating enough waste, downsize. Okay? This will be my last meeting. I appreciate the assemblies that I have been, that I have served with, all the borough staff, the clerk's office, and the community for supporting us and not supporting us at the same time. I really appreciate everybody's public comments. I do enjoy them. I wish there was more. Thank you.
James, are you out of town the next two weeks?
I am going to night shift for the next two weeks and so I will not be able to be here.
Okay. Now I understand better. Thank you for that clarification. Steve?
I'd like to thank everyone who commented tonight, both assembly members and audience. Some people have put a lot of thought into this. The solid waste is a serious thing and we do, I'm glad we postponed so I can look at it closer. We do need to make sure it's fair and equitable for everyone related to the amount of trash they generate. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you. You have a couple of things. I'm going into my fourth year on the assembly and I think this is one of the most interesting meetings that I've ever been a part of. And I really, I really like that. A couple of things, I might be able to have a contrarian view on a public passion and engagement. I think, I think government should be boring, especially after the last ten years. Government should, should be boring. And I don't think we should interpret the lack of, you know, member comment participation or impassioned participation as, as a negative. I think we shouldn't, people, you know, people actually prefer the status quo when it's working for them. And then they show up when it gets wonky, you know? And like we, we brought up education, education budget. And we have, I think, a pretty good track year over the past three, four, maybe even longer, of supporting the school district, going back even a few years before that. So I don't think people need, don't feel that passion because we're doing the job. We're, we're doing the work. And I think that we should, in some cases, or in many cases, if not all cases, interpret that as we're, we're doing the work that we should be doing. A comment also on, on discussion too, I, I understand that holding off on, on amendments and motions is a, can be seen as a norm that the assembly has practiced, maybe relatively consistently over the past several years. But it's, that's not, that's not code. That's not even in Roberts Rules, right? The work session is for the big discussion and, and, and the meeting is for the amendments and the motions. It's the amendments and motions that should spur that discussion as long as, yes, there is ample discussion time to, to debate those motions. So, and that's to keep the meeting a little more orderly. So I don't have a problem with presenting amendments and motions immediately as long as, yes, they're properly discussed. Big shout out things to Bayside. My son goes to Norstar. My sister-in-law teaches at Norstar. And, and her fiance also is a counselor at, at Norstar. So that fuel leak, that was great. They were looking, thinking it was going to be hours and they were back in school before eleven. So I really, really appreciate that. And yes, Special Olympics bowling, their local games are in two weeks. And so I'm rooting for, for Eric and Erin and of course Morgan if she's listening too. And I want to, since James is going to miss the next couple of meetings, I just want to just give a shout out how much I appreciate, appreciate James. I've learned a lot sitting next to, sitting next to James up here on the dais. So I just really, I really just, I just have such gratitude for you. So that's it.
Beau?
Thank you. I, I want to echo Jared's sentiment. Mr. Turner, unprompted, has helped me get over a lot of the learning curve here on the assembly. I'm really grateful for that. To include sometimes maybe when I'm behaving out of order and just didn't know it, just having, just having the candid input and feedback and guidance all from the same person just says a lot about his character. The community has benefited from his guidance and leadership and just being a thoughtful person who clearly cares about the community. We are all better thanks to him, especially myself. So thank you, Mr. Turner. I do appreciate it. Congratulations to the Maritime Museum. I do look forward to visiting. I will likely volunteer as well. I do want to state that I agree with Mr. Turner in how some things were handled and remind those who are responsible and representing the community, the optics of how we conduct business are important. Transparency is important. Trust in government is extremely important. And I just encourage folks moving forward to, if, just, I want to promote and advocate for transparency. I think we're lacking that across the board. We need to improve in that area. But thank you for that. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate all of you. You are helping me every week and I don't take that for granted.
Scott?
I want to thank James Turner. He's been quite a force for the past six years. He's really helped all of us out and I'm gonna miss him. So have good luck. Where are you going? I'm not worried about that at all.
Good, good.
In addition, I want to say it's starting to get cold and my dog doesn't like it. Oh, I want to thank everybody that voted for me too. It's humbling to ask people to vote for you and it's even more humbling when they do. So thanks.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a huge shout out to our election workers. Nova, your team was amazing. Appreciate all the hard work that all of the volunteers did to support those endeavors. So thank you, Mr. Turner. Good riddance. No, I'm just kidding. Congrats to Mr. Johnson, but we will miss you, Mr. Turner. We will miss your critical lens on physical discussions surrounding sensitive topics. I appreciated your analytical lens from a financial standpoint and hope that you continue to hold that level of involvement or at least accountability, very much so. I would like to encourage- I would like to encourage that when items get brought in front of the assembly that we've got transparency and total project understanding. I think that, and in addition to that, I think that we heard a lot of public testimony. One thing that bothers me as I sit up here is when the public comes up and speaks, it's their opportunity to give us their opinion and we're not in a position to argue with someone's opinion. Right? The cardinal rules are you don't argue with someone's opinion, you don't discipline someone else's kids and you don't cheat the IRS. You do those three things and you're gonna be A-OK. We can't argue with their opinion. We can listen to it. We can try to help guide them into whatever subject matter they're looking at, but we can't argue with public opinion. And I would just give a gentle reminder of that. This is a learning position. This is my first elected position. But I have to say that when I make an amendment before discussion, after we, after I've declared in a work session that I would be making that amendment, I'm, you're not gonna get any sympathy from me. So I would encourage public comment on other large topics. What we heard during the Maritime Museum was conviction. We heard passion. And I would love, love, I can give the public a list of the top five things that we can have those passionate and convicted conversations about that really impact our community. I would encourage people to listen to our last work session to now become passionate about some large expenditures that we're looking at. And last two things I wanna talk about is, I wanna give a special shout out to our staff. So I'm gonna call some names out here. Jenna, thank you very much for the time that you put in for the landfill and the leachate interface that you do. Patricia, thank you for the efforts on the playground and the code revisions. And a special thank you to Dave Conrad for stepping up as the acting official and Seemagroot as the backup. So I really appreciate what you guys do as our staff and I appreciate the sacrifices that you guys make sitting in these boring government meetings until nine o'clock. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to allow Steve to recap here a little bit and then I am too, because it wasn't until I asked James, I did not realize this was his last meeting. Steve, you have the floor.
I'd just like to make a comment and possibly apologize. If when people are speaking, they see me do a little sideways twitch like no, does not necessarily mean I am disagreeing with you. It is a tech I have, have had for years. I don't know I'm doing it. And over the years, I've had comments about it. Thank you.
Thank you. James, I'd like to say it has been an extreme pleasure working for you. Will miss you, but I will continue to visit you and talk about things. It's, it's been a pleasure. Will miss you. So with that, the next assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, October 10th at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next assembly regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 17th at 6:30 in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The Kodiak Canvas Team will convene at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, October 9th, in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Public members are welcome to attend. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Scott?
Moved to adjourn.
It's been moved to second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:04. Thank you all for attending.